I call the meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. We'll begin with a flag salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remind everybody that this is a public meeting of the Board of Commissioners, that records are being kept. Before we get any further into the program, I'd like to call on Commissioner Schaefer, if he's able to share a special presentation.
Did you want to read the letter of commendation first?
No, you read it first. You do it first.
So, this is a letter of commendation. Let me find the actual. Go ahead and read another one, George, while I find the actual letter.
Okay. Two letters of commendation today. The first, would like to take this opportunity to publicly recognize you Umatilla County Sheriff's Office Communication Deputy Sherri Hutchinson for organizing and successfully managing our Adopt a Christmas Family program for the second year in a row. Sherri self-initiated this program in 2019. This year Sherri and her group of elves collected donations from UCSO staff and gathered gifts and presents to serve four different families who have a total of 10 foster children ranging in ages from three months old to 14-year-old. In addition to our staff, Sherri also wanted to make sure we gave special thanks to UCSO deputies Tristan Walker, John Reitz, Michael Elwood, Pendleton Fire, East Umatilla County Fire and Rescue, Umatilla Fire, and Santa, UCSO Reserve Deputy Doug Primmer, and Mrs. Santa, UCSO Captain Karen Primmer, who rode in to deliver the gifts on a red fire engine sleigh. Now, cool as that. Thank you Deputy Hutchinson for your initiative and thoughtfulness. Your actions represent the values of the Sheriff's Office and the best attributes of public safety which is helping others. Sheriff Terri Rowan, Under Sheriff Jim Whittlefield, Captain Karen Primmer.
And I just wanted to add that Terri is our cheerleader and dispatch. She's very positive and she's organized us all on her own, while on duty time as well as a lot of personal time. And I know that her family also participated, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this one is a letter of commendation for Dispatcher Gordon Tromb. It's dated January 9, 2021. And it reads, Dispatcher Gordon Tromb, I would like to recognize your efforts and the efforts of those who work with you in preparing for the last call for the funeral services for John Daniel J.D. Lambert on Saturday, January 9, 2021. I was in attendance at this services. I have had the unfortunate opportunity to hear a last call provided in memorial services at no time in my career. I say unfortunate because although it is definitely an honor and a privilege to bear witness to, it is not something we wish for because it usually accompanies heartbreaking circumstances. The situation with J.D. today is no different. I have to express my personal and professional gratitude for the excellence of your performance of this invaluable service today. There were a number of community members and law enforcement professionals in attendance. The emotion of the moment and significance of hearing J.D.'s last call had an impact on my personal presence, whether they were law enforcement or not. I know that having worked with J.D. for a number of years, you had to have had your emotions running high as well. I was supremely grateful and impressed with the steady tone of your transmission and the content of what was said. You represented the agency well, and most importantly, you provided a lasting memory to all those who heard. This is now to honor and send off one of our brothers. I was able to speak with you briefly after the circuit, and as I told you before, this was one of the best, if not the best, last calls I have had the privilege of witnessing. Thank you for your compassion, dedication, and outstanding performance. Sergeant Paul Wolden. And I'm going to attempt to actually play the last call. I don't know if it's going to work. Here it goes. Okay, I don't know if that was able to, if you were able to copy that or not. But that was it. So, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, John. Anyway, I appreciate it and I appreciate your efforts. Finally, I have one additional letter of thank you. Dear Umatilla County Commissioners, Recently, I had a skiing accident and had to be lifelighted to Sacred Heart Hospital Trauma Center in Spokane, Washington. Fortunately for us, lifeflight membership is a benefit of my husband Danny's employment at Umatilla County. Without this insurance, we'd now be facing a big financial burden due to the cost of the flight. If it was left up to the employees to purchase the insurance on their own, a lot of people would probably have passed on paying for such insurance. I know we might have. However, since it was a benefit, it wasn't a choice. It was covered no matter what. Thank you so much. I only wish more employers would take your lead and offer lifeflight membership to their employees. Sincerely, Kathy and Dan Lanai. All right. Any other recognitions? Okay.
I do have, I was told by IP that if I like to present now, and if I presented, you'd be able to hear that last call, because I don't think you're able to hear it.
No, we'll stop certainly.
Do you want me to do that, or do you want to continue?
No, yes, please do that.
Okay, I'm going to click present. I'm sharing my screen now. Okay. So, I'm trying to email him. Here it comes.
Should you unmute the presentation as well? There's a button in the center of your screen where it says presenting.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you've got a fact.
What'd you say?
Okay, yeah, somebody smarter than I am is going to have to figure out how to get that to play. I can even, Melinda, do you have that there?
Oh, boy.
Do you have that keynote? I can forward it to you again. Well, I can hear you assaulting that keyboard.
Thirty-four fifty-six, we did it, sir. Final call for Officer John Daniel J.D. Lambert. A friend, citizen, soldier, officer. Serves his community with courage and valor. Your dedication to the citizens of Umatilla County and to the United States of America will forever be remembered. Thank you for your service and your unending compassion and respect for all. That's time it, I see. Your brothers and sisters have a future. Gone, but not forgotten. Today, January 9, 2021. Ten fifty-nine hours. Thirty-four fifty-six, and now ten forty-two. Rest in peace, sir.
Yeah, I heard it that time.
Yes, well, thank you very much. I think this was such a unique individual who contributed so much, both to the county, to his family, to the community, and to all who knew him. I think it's absolutely appropriate that we take this pause to honor his memory. So, with that, we have done that. Thank you. We'll move on to the rest.
I just wanted to say a quick word. I've got Gordon in here. I don't know if he wants to say a few words about this situation, but he did a fantastic job. Everybody I talked to said there wasn't a dry eye, so, thank you.
Well, it was my pleasure. He was a special guy, and he was well-known, and it was something that I think needed to be done.
Well, thank you.
Gordon, good job on that. I thought you did a very good job, and I know how hard that is. You're phenomenal, and you represented the agency and the county well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Commissioner Schaefer. All right. We will move on to the acknowledgment of the minutes from the previous meeting, December 16, 2020. Do you have a motion for approval?
Is there a move?
There's a second?
Second.
On favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Additions to the agenda. Oh, the letter's there. Okay. All right. Very good. We will then, is there any input? Anybody on the line, anybody who would like to speak who is not on the agenda?
I'm Sharon Livingston, and I'm not on the agenda. Do you have a time for comment?
Yes, this is a point in the agenda when you're allowed several minutes to make any comment you wish.
I will be very brief, as I'm hoping that all of you folks are working to do something about stopping this lockdown. I see no point in keeping our restaurants closed. It's difficult for them. It's difficult for business. I'm an 81-year-old resident of Oregon. I have basically moved to Pendleton to be with people and to have some social interaction. I believe, I, this is not my Oregon, I had no idea that one person in the state of Oregon could stop everything that was happening and make decisions as to who was remain open and who was not. So, I ask, I've been in contact with you folks, I ask that you continue to work with the governor to open up Umatilla County. I do not believe that the COVIDs are coming from our restaurants. I believe there's another place, and it's unfair that we are all being hampered, and basically, we're destroying businesses in this community. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yes, Sharon, if you stay on, you will find that we're going to address that. No one knew this because we just added it to the agenda, but you will be interested to know that item 14 actually speaks, item 16 actually speaks to that topic.
Thank you.
All right. Item number one, Umatilla County Soil and Water Conservation District Annual Presentation.
Mr. Wagner should be.
Okay. Are you there? I see him. You're on. Please identify yourself.
Would you like to, Melinda, would you like me to present from my screen, or are you going to?
I have it on my screen. I can do it from here.
Okay, great. All right. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for having me on. Thanks again for, Commissioners, for continuing to support the district and our mission as we try to continue conservation and helping agriculture in Umatilla County. As always, just kind of going over a brief presentation of who we are and what we do. Our focus primarily is conservation. Our mission is to conserve, protect, and develop the natural resources for the environmental and economic benefit of Umatilla County. We do this in three primary ways. First and foremost is outreach and education, trying to make sure that the people on the ground, farmers and ranchers, landowners, get the education they need to improve their operation. We also implement projects and provide technical assistance whenever we can through grants. And then we collaborate with all the entities we can to continue to build lasting systems in our region. In that outreach and education, we typically have a watershed field day event, which educates all the fifth graders in Umatilla County. It's kind of like a combination of outdoor school and career fair, and the primary purpose of that is to introduce students to the natural resources and agriculture. And it's a six-day event, and we hold three different locations, one outside Pilot Rock, one outside Umatilla, and we also have one in Lexington to pick up some of the Harvard West schools in McCann. We provide information boost, trainings, and we also have our newsletter. Through project planning and implementation, 90% of our funding comes through OAN grants on the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board. There's two different types of grants there that we go after, small grants and large grants. And through those grants, we were almost 100% grant funded, so if we are to do any work at all in the county, we must get a grant to do it. And so, we have spent, we spend most of our time going after the Watershed Enhancement Board grants, and they fit our purpose and goal the best. We also have our focus areas, which is where we assist the Oregon Department of Agriculture in specific watersheds to try and bring assistance to the landowners in those areas of conservation agricultural problems. And a new statewide initiative on the strategic implementation areas, which is led by the Oregon Department of Agriculture, we also assist in helping the ODA implement the water quality rules in the county, which, what it does is to make sure, make sure that the residents of Umatilla County are getting credit for the good job of doing the agriculture. And the last category I mentioned, collaboration, we work with partners to perform assessments, monitor, build lasting systems, jointly approach regional issues. Before the fiscal year of 1920, we didn't have watershed field days unfortunately due to coronavirus. We're actually working right now and developing an online package. We reached out to the schools, and they're very interested in online package, and so we're going to still be able to bring something for the fifth graders this year, even in light of everything that's going on with the virus. For that category of outreach and education, most of our work in the last, in this last fiscal year was spent working on the flooding and bank stabilization issues that we've experienced in both 2019 and 2020, those major events. And we held about four different education events for landowners to come and learn the permitting process for Department of State lands and the Army Corps of Engineers requirements to get a permit, so they are able to save a property. And that has been a big push for us this year in trying to help folks on the ground. That's the biggest issue we're dealing with at the moment. So, for project planning and implementation, the different projects we did in 2019 and 2020, we worked on a total of 21 projects. Of those 21 projects, we submitted five for funding, and three of those were funded. And that total secured project dollars that we brought to the county was around $300,000. Those projects, all of them actually, all of them except one dealt with the repairing damage from the floods that were caused, including replacing fence that was washed away, and the other one was livestock water development. And moving on, I mentioned the focus areas from, that we assist the, or we lead the, a initiative in watershed to help kind of show the good job that Ag is doing, and this is where we help the ODA implement their rules. And we were in Cowes Creek, that watershed, in fiscal year 1920, and we actually just closed it, and we're actually moving south to Owens Creek come the next couple of years. We see a lot of potential for work there, and we're really looking forward to that. For the strategic implementation area, again, this is the new initiative from the state that is Oregon Department of Agriculture-led that we assist with, and we do have a current strategic implementation area in our county, and that's Lower Birch Creek, Mackay Creek, and Stewart Creek, which has been huge because we were able to have staff time and funding and dollars when we had the big Mackay Creek flooding event, and so we were able to bring that to bear and assistance to try to find a solution. And so, we're currently continuing to install projects, again, replacing a lot of fencing that was washed away, continuing outreach, educating people on how to get their stabilization permit, and we're also doing some water quality sampling, hopefully for the next five to 10 years, which will be great to get some data on how stuff is changing, especially with a big flood event. Talking about the flood events, that has been the bulk of our work this last fiscal year, 1920, and we, how we helped out is our goal was to act as an information hub to connect landowners with the proper regulatory authorities, primarily DSL and Army Corps of Engineers. We discovered that most landowners in the county are, have a hard time understanding the process to legally get a permit to get in the stream, and so we made it our goal to act as an information hub. If someone had a question, they could call me, and I could direct them to the right regulatory authorities, so they could begin the process of getting a permit. We also, anyone who wanted a site visit to kind of, kind of get some technical assistance and our perspective on the damage and the fix for a flooding solution, we met with landowners to help assess that damage and to look for potential projects that we could apply for them. And we're currently working, designing, and implementing projects for all the different flooding damage concerns. And the last thing we kind of did is we began our drone program, applying our drone to document the damage and to allow landowners to have a better picture of what had happened on the property to aid in the permitting process. So, just a few quick numbers. I mean, in that fiscal year of 1920, we assisted 50-plus one-on-one landowners in the county. We went on 25-plus site visits, and we've currently submitted three different projects, $100,000 total, on Mackay Creek, Lower Umatilla, and Hamas Creek. So, we're really covering as much as we can of the area of the damage. And moving on to kind of the meat of how we use the county contribution of the $10,000.
Sorry, John Schaefer, sorry to interrupt you. I'm wanting to see your presentation. I can see it in the background with Comet and Murlock there on that screen. That's the only reason I knew it was actually playing.
Would you like me to present from my end, or would that be better?
Okay, let me try that. Let me try it. Okay, you're on. Why don't we go ahead?
It's very nice, John.
Well, it looks like you've got a lot to look at.
Yeah, no worries. So, let's see, if I present. Let me try this.
Just go to the presenter mode quicker, yeah. There you go.
All right.
There it is.
Everyone see my slide now?
Yep. Yes, sir.
All right, thanks, John. I'm sorry about that.
I do have a copy, Commissioner Schaefer and Doran, that you will be able to look at after the meeting, so.
All right. Moving on. So, again, thank you for that, the county contributions, so just reporting on how we use those funds. We typically use that county contribution for a variety of different purposes, typically on our largest and highest impact projects. So, in fiscal year 1920, we actually used 5,000 of that contribution towards our drone program specifically to offset the cost of us providing flights for any landowner in Umatilla County that was affected by the flood, wanted energy flown to document the bank erosion. So, when the flood first happened, we almost basically did a no-charge for people who wanted their property flown, and that, your county contribution enabled us to do that, to backfill, you know, the time and the use of the equipment. And so, we helped out quite a few people, and instead of charging them, you know, normal price for the drone, we were able to offset that. We did a flat fee of $25. So, anyone who wanted to fly, we were able to fly. Another 4,000 of your county contribution was used for a salary match to secure a National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant, which actually provided a full-time employee for us, and that grant spoke of health, education, and outreach over the entire county. And that final $1,000 was split between three small grants as match, and each of those grants was under $15,000 total. And so, this quick graphic of kind of where, how your funds were spent, but basically, your $10,000 helped bring in about 160,000 outside funds into Umatilla County and lowered costs for drone flights for landowners, and again, helped create one job. So, we were really, really thrilled to have those funds to be able to do that. Just kind of wrapping up. We're always here to serve. Some of our skills and perks include our GIS mapping capabilities, environmental impact project mitigation, applying for grants. Again, besides your contribution at this point, we're 100% grant funded, so that's why your contribution is so important. Our low cost, research analysis entity, we're non-regulatory, so we don't have any regulatory side of our jurisdiction, water management, erosion, wildlife, kind of all realms, natural resources. And finally, our drone program currently, it's really literally taken off this last fiscal year, 1920. We've been working on doing everything from base of weed scouting and mapping, documenting natural resource emergencies. The big one, of course, is the river stream erosion mapping. You know, we can do road washout and revision channel scouting. One of the big things we're doing right now is working on mapping elevation for, we've flown for multiple municipalities in the county to help see where current And this may be out of the best format, but I just wanted to let the commissioners know that we are willing and able and would love to find additional ways that we can serve the commissioners in the county. And, and if there's a follow-up meeting or something we can do, that would be great. We're more than happy to continue to expand our capability in serving the residents of Yumitilla County. Thanks again for that county contribution. We really wouldn't be able to accomplish without it. And hopefully you're able to see that that contribution is huge in helping us bring in more funds and giving back to the people of the county. And that is all I have. Thank you for your time, everyone. Any questions?
Comments from the commissioners?
Chairman Murdock?
Yes.
Kyle, real quickly, and I look forward to sitting down and meeting you, the, your library of this year's drone flights, is that accessible?
Yes, sir. So I, everyone I've flown for, I had them sign, all the landowners, I had them sign a sharing agreement. So it is, I can definitely make it accessible with, if needed, with a little bit of further permission from some of the landowners. And I've already flown some more flights this year already since the weather's been so nice. And my goal, one of the goals that we're working on is getting the entire Lower Yumitilla mapped. We have about a third of it done so far, around the Echo area.
Thanks, Kyle.
Commissioner Schaefer?
I just want to thank Kyle for that presentation. I thought it was very well done and glad to be a part of it. You've done a lot of good work this year and I'm all aware of that, so thank you for all your efforts.
Well, we appreciate the partnership. I think it reminds us of exactly where Yumitilla, where agriculture stands in the economy of Yumitilla County, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the next item. Is Bob Walder going to do that? All right, the, from the Pine Department, the statewide transportation improvement fund. Bob, are you there?
I am, Commissioner. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, so our statewide transportation improvement fund, or STIF committee, has met over the last couple of months and has reviewed STIF projects from each of our transit providers in the county, as well as application from Yumitilla County. And then work closely with Stacy Coons, who is our transit coordinator. Stacy, are you on the line today?
Yes, I am. I am here for Stacy Coons.
Great. So the committee met a couple of weeks ago and selected their recommended projects for the 22 to 23 biennium. And so at this time, I'm going to ask Stacy to just provide a brief overview for the commissioners for the projects that they're seeking approval for.
Good morning, commissioners. This is Stacy Coons, who is the Transit. The STIF plan for fiscal year 2022 and 23 is a mix of projects that, to be maintained from the current STIF plan, along with new projects for route, planning, capital, and a system sustainability project and policy. The STIF advisory committee fixed approval of the Yumitilla County STIF plan and policy. I didn't know if there was any question about any of the projects or the policy.
Chairman Murdock?
Commissioner Dorn?
I, I would like to take a moment just to echo what was said in the staff meeting earlier this week, if that's okay.
Sure.
For those that weren't at the staff meeting, ODOT during our meetings had some very high commendations for Stacy and her team and the Morro County, but they are so far ahead of the rest of the state in, in their projects and in the way they put them together. It, it makes Yumitilla County look extremely good. And I would like to personally thank Stacy for all of her work and putting these projects together. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Commissioner Dorn.
Yeah, I think we're fortunate that Stacy, we're making a, a change in Stacy's status, which is, is not today, but at some point this spring, which will make her an even more permanent part of our staff. So thank you for your work, Stacy.
Thank you.
We have a need for two motions. One is to approve-
I, I move to approve as per the Yumitilla County STIF plan as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I believe we also have to approve the Yumitilla County system sustainability policy.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is comments relative to the Nolan Hills Wind Project. I believe, Mr. Walder, you're on there too?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Commissioner. You might recall back in April, we reviewed the preliminary application for site certificate, which is before the Energy Facility Siding Council for the Nolan Hills project. At that time, it was approximately, it was just a wind project, approximately 350 megawatt wind project on 48,000 acres in the Nolan area. And since then, the project has expanded in scope to where now it includes approximately 300 megawatts of solar and also battery storage, which will be located within the, the solar array. And so they were required to submit a revised preliminary application for site certificate. We're in the process of finishing up our review of that application. And Commissioner Dorn and I visited with our citing analyst at the state yesterday, had a good conversation about it. And I'm currently working with Doug Olson, our county council, to wrap up the comments. So pending his review, we're, we're seeking board approval to sign the letter, which will go to the State Department of Energy.
Questions? We, we would like to get, eventually get approval of our comment letter to, to be sent to FSIC.
Yeah, that, that's correct. We're, we, we had one issue come out yesterday that Doug and I were, needed a little more research. I think we've, we figured out what we needed to do on that, so like I said, we're wrapping up the comments and we're hoping to have your approval on it.
Commissioner Dorn, since you were involved in that conversation, I'll defer to you if you wish to make a motion.
I, I was pleasantly surprised at how advanced the project is, especially in the planning stage. The, the Siding Council was very positive on the project. The, I guess a little bit of disappointing and good news at the same time because of some regulations, some of the new technology on the larger wind blades will not be able to be used, but it's also going to force the developer to use new technology even on shorter blades. They're about a third, a third less tall, I guess, for lack of a term. The blades are about a third the size in length as proposed, but they still will generate really close to the same amount of entropy. So it was very interesting. It was, it was a great project and I was pleasantly surprised to hear the, the motivation to get it done.
Good. Are you going to make a motion?
I, do we need, can we make a motion before the letter's finished? If so, I, I'm, I'm more than, more than willing.
Yeah, I'll see the, if you, if you don't mind, I'll rephrase that, a motion that we approve the letter as, as finalized by you, council, and, and the planning director. Is that all right?
That would be great.
So, so I'm moving, Chairman Murdock.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the creation of a position in public works. Mr. Fellows, are you with us today?
Good morning, commissioners. Tom Fellows, Yumitilla County Public Works Director. What we brought before the board today is a request to authorize a added maintenance tube position. Fortunately or unfortunately, this would be a position that we actually did away with a number of years ago due to downsizing and budget constraints. We're in a position now, we have a young man that we've, have approximately two years of training involved in. He's passed his CDL and we would like to open up a position and move him into that. Primarily, this is a little forward-looking also because we do anticipate in the next couple of years, retirements that would actually, could possibly bring this back in line. So anyhow, that's, that's what we're looking at today is just wanting to, want to get a trained-up young man on our crew full-time.
Questions for Tom?
I, I would make the motion that this position be filled as presented by Tom.
Is there a second?
Well, I'm half afraid to make this second because I know our, our maintenance supervisor is going to be really unhappy with me, so if I make this second, that means that I also know this young man and I know he'd be a great addition to the team, so.
Well, I saw the maintenance director on there a bit ago. We could see what he looks like disappointed. Anyway, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Tom, you have three items.
Okay, I'm unsure what the next item, let me take it.
The dump truck part, no, road groomer attachment purchase.
So in an effort to, to bring some tool, good tools to our, our employees so that they can better work their road maintenance and grading of our county roads, we've looked around and found an attachment for road graders that, that should make it, make our grading operations much more efficient. It's called a road groomer. It, it'll mount right to the lift group on the front of the road graders. This would be a non-capital purchase and certainly it's our, in our best estimation that, that it'll make the end result of our roads, with a combination of this and, and the compactors that we have on the back of the grader should certainly increase the length of time between grading operations.
I make a motion, I make a motion for approval of the purchase of this groomer.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, Tom, the final item I have is item number six, dump truck purchase.
Yep. This is, this is a part of our continuing effort to, to update our fleet. Just for the board information is we do understand our, our state highway fund dollars are, are going to be down this year. So what we've done is, is we pared back and decided that we're not going to spend a portion of our equipment replacement budget. However, moving forward, these dump trucks actually won't have a build date till May and so we really need to get, if we're going to go ahead and, and do some updates this year, we really needed to move forward. The dump trucks are certainly something that, that we, we need to continue upgrading on our fleet. We're, maintenance and repairs on these newer trucks are, are much less than, than the older trucks. So what we're requesting is the purchase of, of two dump trucks fitted with snow plows and Sanders from Woodpecker Truck. And these, the, the total price individually of, of each truck is going to be $186,524.41. And this would be part of our capital equipment line.
Were you able to acquire these locally?
They're coming from Woodpecker Truck, yes.
Oh, good, thank you. All right, action?
I, I would make a motion that to approve the purchase of the two dump trucks with snow plows and Sanders as presented by Tom.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fellows.
Thank you, commissioners.
Item number seven, dispatch payment. Sergeant Primmer was there, or Captain Primmer, I'm sorry. Sorry, Karen, didn't mean to demote you.
I've been called worse. So what we're looking for is, we're seeking approval for payment for an upgrade for the CenturyLink 911 equipment in the back room, and it also covers for our tech, Jason Morris, who is on site. The state did a study, didn't feel like we need six positions, so they're only paying for five. So what we're looking at is $6,619.16 for the sixth position for the year.
Oh, we are talking about number eight, okay. All right.
I apologize.
That's all right, let's finish eight. I'm going, what the heck? Okay, let's finish eight. Is there a motion to approve? It is in the amount of $6,619.16.
Mr. Chair, I make the motion to approve on that one. It's sustained the state of the need to not fully fund all six positions because we certainly need all six, so I make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's go back to approve the payment to computer information system in the amount of $10,100, is that correct, council? Okay?
Do you agree on a vote on that one first?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, all in favor of the first motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now back to item number seven.
So we're seeking approval payment for the annual maintenance report for the previous CAD system, which is called CIS Systems. This will be the final payment for them. At the end of the year, we will be basically not using it any longer. We came up with a mutually agreed middle-of-the-road amount, and that's the $10,100. So this will be the final payment for that.
Karen, quick question. It states that you'll be able to access older information and older records. How, how long will you have that privilege?
We'll have it through the end of the year and we've notified our area partners because this was global. And we're, the county itself in-house are printing off records and doing their own. We've notified the others, including Morro County, that they have till December 31st to figure out how they're going to make that accessible, any reports they need. They're going to have to either print them off or come up with a way to access them. At the end of that year, we will no longer be able to access CIS. We own the data inside, but we don't own the software to make it run. And we've been paying for it for quite a while.
Got, gotcha. But the $10,100 doesn't, doesn't include a drop of that information?
Basically, it gives us, it's, I guess you'd say it's half of what we've been paying for the yearly maintenance to access those records. And since we're only going to be using it through the end of the year, we cut it in half. And after that point, there will not be any further access to it. So it's, I guess it's our fee for being able to use the, the software to access our own data.
So are we going to be, will you be able to digitize all of that before the end of the year?
Yes. The records division under Lieutenant Ward is well underway with that project.
Perfect, thank you.
And the other agencies are aware as well.
Thank you, Karen.
Action?
Mr. Chair, approve of-
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number nine- Okay, item number nine, IT payable.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan, I'm Dan with Director of Administrative Services. And before you is a payable for the DA's office for upgrading all their Adobe licenses, Adobe PDF licenses. They use it with their Carpeil system, and the versions they have are so outdated, are no longer supported, and they become a security risk in their DA system that they use, Carpeil, is the internet-based system, which we really need to make sure that we have that up as the latest version so that we don't have any sort of data or security breach. And it's just a little over $5,000, so that's why it's for you.
I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dan, if you're still on there, please convey our thanks to Kathy for her kind letter and also our good wishes for her continued recovery.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Murdock. Yes, we appreciate it. And as she said in there, we appreciate the lifeline insurance. It was quite the ride, but I reckon it's going forward as well, so thank you. I also like to, before Mark addresses the next two ones up there, there's the maintenance payable, the first one, the payable for insulating the shop and the tire shed, whatever we call it, the tire repair area out at the road department. And Mark's been working real well with the Energy Trust of Oregon and one of our biggest buildings, Tom's shop out there at the road department, is one of our biggest energy users. And there is no insulation. Before December, there was no insulation in the ceiling of that building, and the heat was just going right out. There's other reasons why the heat goes out here, because they opened the doors and many other things, but there was no insulation. With this program that Mark's been working with, with the Energy Trust, I think they paid for most or maybe almost all of this cost to get this insulated, but we had to do it by December 31st. And it's just another wonderful program that admin services and maintenance have been working at trying to improve our buildings and utilizing the Energy Trust that's been saving us money and getting money in return for doing those items, too. So we usually have to pay back relatively quickly on all of these projects. Anyway, I'll let Mark explain more if need be.
Mark, floor is yours.
Yeah, Mark Tanner, Facilities Manager, Umatilla County. Yeah, as Dan stated, we've been working with the Energy Trust quite a bit on a lot of projects. We're hopeful that the payouts will be quick. They've been moving a little slow lately because of COVID, but we don't anticipate any other issues.
Questions from the Commissioners?
Dan, Mr. Chair, I move approval.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be interesting to watch the reduction in hot air escaping from Public Works. All right, second item.
The next item there is, Mark probably drew to is the tiling for the bathroom on the first floor to remodeling, making that into the ADA accessible women's restroom, and it's just paid for that tiling there. So I'll leave you on the end of questions. Mark should be able to answer them for you.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Of the second one? Oh, yes. Okay, the second part is to approve the remodeling expenses for the first-floor restroom. Right?
Yes, because of the dollar amount that's been expended on this, Finance is requesting that the project be approved.
Okay, you have a motion of that effect?
My question first, I move to approve, but I do have a question. Is, Mark, do we have any kind of estimate of what the final, or is this the last approval? Or where are we in the project? Being new to the game, I don't know where we are in this project.
Yeah, we'll have, I'll have another invoice from the plumbers when they come and finish up, but everything else is in-house.
Thank you.
And the overall budget between the two bathrooms was $45,000.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
What was that? Okay, item 12, lipstick appointments.
Okay, this is coming before the board to approve another of appointments to the local Public Safety Coordinating Council due to changes in employment and other matters. Eight representatives needed to be updated on lipstick, and so that's what's before the board for approval, is the appointment of those eight individuals.
Does it show there? Okay.
It's like the city, Pendleton Police, Lifelines, Circuit Court Judges, Public Health, Human Services, Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
Do we just need the motion to approve the list?
Adopt order number BCC 2021-010.
Move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will adjourn into hearing mode for the purpose of supplemental budgets. And I'll call on Robert Paul.
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, we have five supplemental budgets to consider. I will read you a brief description of each. Budget Order 2021-16, the General Fund Elections Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenue of $47,000 and an increase in capital outlay of $47,000. Budget Order 2021-17, Economic Development Program, the Economic Development Reserve requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenue of $2.9 million and an increase in materials and services of $2.9 million. Budget Order 2021-18, the Sheriff Emergency Management Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenue of $105,000 and an increase in capital outlay of $105,000. And Budget Order 2021-19, Prepayment of Taxes requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $70,000 and an increase in materials and services of $70,000. And finally, Budget Order 2021-20, Capital Project Stack or Hampho Building requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $1,000 and an increase in transfers out of $1,000.
All right, questions for Robert?
Phil, if I had mine yesterday, I would move for.
Hold on a second.
Sorry.
Questions from the public? Any comment from the public? All right, then we will move out of hearing mode and back into our regular meeting so we can take action. I will read the budget order and then ask for a motion. The first is Budget Order 2021-16. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. Budget Order 2021-17. Is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Budget Order number 2021-18. Motion?
Right again, motion for approval. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Budget Number 2021-19. Motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Budget Order Number 2021-20, a motion for approval?
Motion for approval. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Budget transfers, Robert, back to you.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have two budget transfers to consider today. Budget Order 2021-21 is the GIS Equipment Reserve, and it requires a transfer of appropriations to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. It requires an increase in materials and services of $7,000 and a decrease in capital outlay of $7,000. And Budget Order 2020-22, the Dispatch Reserve Program, requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in capital outlay of $31,000 and a decrease in contingency of $31,000.
All right.
Chair, move approval for Budget Order 2021-21.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Move approval for Budget Order 2021-22.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, Cook Building sale. Council and I have been working with the city of Hermiston. I believe we have a point, we're at a point now where we can finalize that, if that is correct.
I think so. We, there were some terms of the lease that there were some questions about and concerns. I think we deleted most of those from the proposed lease.
Right.
So it's back ready for formal approval.
Okay. Questions about that lease?
Both you and Council are comfortable with that?
Yeah, I will, I will move for, make the motion on that one, BCC 2021-11, since I've been involved in it since the start.
I'll second. Oops, sorry, Dan.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. The last item is a letter from, a letter from the city of Pendleton to the governor's office relative to opening restaurants and bars and an appeal. Do you have a copy of that, Council?
Uh, I guess it's.
Oh, it's on the, it's on the screen. I don't know if anybody can, everyone can see it. Commissioner Schaefer, would you mind reading that, please?
Sir. It says, "Dear Governor Brown, we, the collective leaders of Umatilla County, request that you implement a limited opening of our vinyl restaurant industry. In spite of the closing of all inside dining, our COVID-19 numbers have continued to run. Our restaurants are not responsible for the county's increase in positive test rates, and we wonder if the lack of dining choices might be driving our citizens to more risky non-social activities. When examining the Center for Disease Control and CDC data from two states with completely different restrictions on kidneys, we believe that locking down restaurants does greater economic harm than its value in controlling the spread of the virus. Recent statistic from the CDC found that California with strict controls is overtaking Florida with restaurants open versus gym, and COVID-19 deaths rates over seven-day average in California were 1.4 for 100,000 versus Florida, 0.8 for 100,000. The CDC also shows that California's COVID hospitalization rate was recently 56 for 100,000 versus Florida's hospitalization rate of 36 for 100,000. These numbers are surprising in light of Florida's much older population. Umatilla County has a strong tourism industry in normal times, and this industry relies heavily on our numerous restaurants. If they are not allowed to reopen soon, many of them will shut their doors permanently. If allowed to reopen at capacity, some will survive. Our neighbors at the Confederate Tribes of the Umatilla Indian Reservation have demonstrated that they can safely operate their casino, which has hundreds of visitors daily. Our large retail stores like Safeway and Walmart have shown themselves capable of handling large volumes of people safely each day. Please allow our local restaurants to demonstrate with a much smaller volume of passport that they can also have in a safe and responsible manner. Respectfully submitted."
This letter was, thank you, Commissioner Schaefer. This letter was prepared by John Turner, the mayor of Pendleton, and is, was coming from the city, asking if the Commissioners would be willing to join in cosigning that letter to the office of the governor. In addition, I did ask that perhaps we would be able to weave in the fact that what we're discovering through our work is that the number of gatherings, the incidents of positive COVID cases from gatherings seems to be increasing in the county as one of the major sources. While we don't have exact statistics to this regard, it is at this point our belief that the limited number of offerings available to the citizens of Umatilla County are actually causing people to be more likely to gather than they would be if they had other options, such as bars and restaurants, where they could, where they could gather, as well as the fact, considering the fact that those places are all very, very strictly monitored, very, very strictly cared for. They well know that in order to remain open, they have to go to extra measures to prevent against COVID or to provide the sanitization. So we think it might actually possibly help reduce the incidence of COVID if we could provide people those kind of options in facilities that are cared for in an extraordinary fashion. So, other comments? Commissioner Schaefer, Commissioner Doran?
Chairman Murdock, I thank you for bringing this letter to the Commission. I think that Mayor Turner of Pendleton wrote an excellent letter highlighting the exact reasons that restaurants should be able to be open on a limited basis. My questions right now are, as a county commission, are we, is this letter also going to be endorsed or presented to the other communities throughout the county before it's presented to the governor?
I'll have to, I can ask that of Mayor Schaefer, or excuse me, Mayor Turner.
Yeah, I think that would be important to make sure that we have a full county voice as we present this to the governor. And it may be important that we also listen to whatever, whatever her council brings back, because I think that we could definitely align the restaurant group, whatever, mean, whether it be the Chamber of Commissions or a liaison or whatever. I think we need to stand in the strongest position possible when presenting a letter like this.
I don't know what the exact statistics are in Oregon or in Umatilla County, but I am aware of the latest statistics, statistic that I saw from across the country is that 110,000 restaurants have closed permanently since March 1st.
The latest forecast is 60% of the restaurants that were open June of last year will permanently close. It's heartbreaking, but I just, my only comment is I would like this letter to be as strong as possible with as many voices as possible coming from the Commission.
Yeah, it looks like it was sent to the city of Hermiston for their. Yeah, it looks like it was sent to the city of Hermiston for their review too.
Perfect, thank you.
I can't sign this letter fast enough. Our small businesses are hurting, our small restaurants are, you know, the backbone of our economy. So I, I'm just devastated by those numbers that I've here, but I think I can't sign that fast enough.
I would vote for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye? Aye. All right, unanimously approved. Are there any other, any other items set to come before the commission? Comments from Commissioners, Commissioner Schaefer?
The only thing I wanted to bring up is I received an email from the Forest Service today that, a report to repair Forest Service Route 54, which is also known as Pearson Creek Road off of Burke Street, a section that's been washed out since the flood, that they're starting work on that. That'd be nice for our recreation abilities and everything else, so I'm glad to see that for a bit, and that's all, thank you.
Commissioner Doran?
Thank you, Chairman Murdock. I do have something that I do want to bring up. I had the honor last night to attend the Stanfield City Council meeting. It was fairly lengthy and didn't get over till after nine, but I was there presenting the channel migration zone plan that Director Walters has been working on. But what I really want to mention is, there are a lot of good things going on in our small communities throughout Yumitila County. And just one example was Cecil Longhorn and her Stanfield Library program and the thousands, over 6,000, thousands of kids that it served without even opening up their door. They ran out of money very quickly during the pandemic, but found ways to serve the community and actually had community members from Echo and Stanfield coming to the Stanfield Library. It was enjoyable to watch her yearly report. But what brought to my mind was, we all are very frustrated and disappointed in a lot of the outcomes of the results of this pandemic, but I sure wish the commission could find a way, whether it's through a rise in shine recognition, a very vague guidelines, but if there was some way we could recognize the efforts and the innovation of the people throughout the county and the ways that they are overcoming this pandemic, whether it be find somebody or nominate somebody each commission meeting or once a month. But I, my shout out to the Stanfield Library and Cecil Longhorn and all of her volunteers just to be there to watch that presentation. It was incredible. If you're looking for a news story, there's a success one right there. But they go on, they're happening throughout our county, and they're doing it without recognition. And it would be really enjoyable and optimistic and on the bright side, if we could find a way to recognize maybe one of these each month throughout the county, because the hills they are overcoming are proving that there's no hills too tall for the people of Yumitila County to climb. And it was just enjoyable, and if there's no objection, I wouldn't mind even drawing out some very, very vague foul lines, but some way to start recognizing some of the innovation and just the creativity of the people of Yumitila County moving forward through this pandemic. But that's what I have, thank you, Chairman Murdock.
Thank you Commissioner Doran. Well, actually, I was going to say is I hope it doesn't last very long and that the whole program ends quickly, but on the other hand, I think maybe when you draw it up, you might give some consideration to the fact that even if we didn't do it twice a month during, beyond COVID, it may actually be something we might want to consider doing. We have on occasion honored individuals or rural communities that might not have otherwise gotten attention, and I, we've never formalized it, and I think you're on to something and maybe something might, we may want to perpetuate. So we could either formally launch it, or we could wait till you bring back your guidelines. Commissioner Schaefer?
I'm good with either way. So everyone, I think it's great.
All right.
Why don't you let me, why don't you let me bring back a short rules of the game and start from there?
It appears to me by, Doug just appeared, our counsel, so it would appear to me we need to get that on the agenda. So we'll put it on the agenda for our next meeting. A shadow cross, a shadow crossed the dais. So, all right, anything else? All right. Pardoned.